Good morning.
Good morning.
How can I help you today?
I'm here for the council meeting.
Ah, perfect, perfect. Could you excuse me for a moment? My colleague up here needs to ask you a few questions for it.
Hi ma'am, how you doing today?
Alright.
I just need, are you coming in for the meeting? The council meeting?
Of course.
Yeah, I just need to make sure you don't have any guns, weapons, weapons, alcohol, or drugs on you. Do you mind if I pat you down?
That's no problem with me.
Thank you very much.
Hello Harmony. Hello Johnny.
Hello.
Morning.
How's it going? Doing well, looking to get in for the council meeting.
You're all good. Thank you Harmony.
No problem.
Alright, right. Do you know where the council meeting is?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, Laura, oh okay.
Alright, if you walk to the end of the hallway, turn to the right, you will enter then.
Thank you.
Hello. Morning.
How you doing Harmon?
Alright, well it's uh 5:04 in the afternoon on the 11th of August. Uh, the council members we have here today is myself, Matthew Martin, William White, Connor Fitzgerald, our wonderful police chief Joe Rosner, and our wonderful EMS Grant McMillan.
Yeah Grant.
The people that we do not have an attendance currently as his meeting is commencing is uh Valerie Donovan, uh Kelly Salvatore, and our mayor Daniel Marino. So, that is our road goal for today. Uh initially, we're gonna be starting off with any uh talking points anybody has that they need to immediately raise. Then we're gonna be moving to introducing our legislation. Um, we're gonna be voting on that legislation. We also have a more internal action that we're going to be bringing up. That is gonna be a vote of no confidence in the mayor position. Um, and then we're gonna have question time for you people. So that's our structure for today and uh yeah, hope you enjoy.
Good job Matthew.
So, do any council members have any stuff that they want to raise? To discuss it all immediately? We'll start with that.
I swear, oh, of course.
Hello everyone. I'm uh William White.
Holy, get him boys.
As all of you must know already. Those of you who do not, as a former senior officer of the LSPD, run the DMV, and run various businesses on the side. I've decided to take on the responsibility of the voice of the people in the city council. Now, in the past, I have been made aware of the speed limits around the island. And that has been of some concern for a while. I do not believe going at 55 on a freeway is particularly safe. So I will be working on that to, I'll be working on trying to raise that speed limit to a much safer speed limits. Right now, locals are overtaking you and that could end up and result in a lot of, you know, death or damages of vehicle or person. My objective whilst uh being in the city council is to keep up the morale. I'll be working on that. So uh if you ever have a suggestion or any idea or complaint, then please do mail me or approach me at the DMV. I'll try to make time out of my to listen, sit down, and you know, talk things through. But right now, the most immediate thing we're working on is the speed limits. I'd like to, you know, make sure.
It's good, it's good that we've got somebody who's got experience with death and vehicles in charge of this situation.
Alright, okay. Does anyone have any uh, any concerns? Questions about that uh? Anyone? Put your hands.
Um yeah, what are you thinking of um pushing the speed limit down?
Well uh, the speed limits on the freeway should be pushed up to 78 to, or 79. Reason is, the locals do tend to drive at that speed. And that is considered safe.
Why not just do 80?
Uh well, we could push it to 80, but um until it's put on paper and I've discussed it with everyone else, uh that's the kind of numbers, that's where we'll be floating around. And the city speed will remain at 40, maybe push to 45. I don't wanna see any vehicles, you know, zooming through the street. That's where most of the damages happen. And the incidents. Anything else relating to the speed limits around the island?
Um, I have a question.
Raise your voice. Stand up and raise.
I'm okay, I'm trying to, I got shot in the throat yesterday.
Okay.
You know how that is. Um, so speed it up to 79, which is a ridiculous number, but let's say 80. Yeah. What about vehicles that don't go that fast? I know vans are very slow. We'd be pulling them over, wouldn't we?
Yep. Well,
That's why there's two lanes.
Yes. That's uh, that's something that has come across my mind.
Mm-hmm.
It is best for the slower vehicles to remain in one lane and stay in that lane until they've exited the freeway. I know some of the store vehicles are capped at 55 max. They should be staying on the lane closer to the shoulder of the freeway.
So we'll have to pay attention to do two different speed limits.
That's correct.
That are 30 plus apart from each other.
Well, thing is, on my side, I could easily talk to the governor and try and see if we can get a cap limiter taken off of those vehicles. But till then, those vehicles will be capped at 55 and they will remain on one lane. They shouldn't be switching lanes.
Okay, and then how much city you want for in city?
Uh sorry, pardon me?
How much city do you want for in city?
In the city, it's currently 40. I don't, I don't think I'm gonna, 35. It might be 40, but um, I still like it at 35 because people are still getting into vehicle incidents within the city limits.
Yeah, because they're going 90, yeah.
So that will probably stay the same. And they will be charged adequately if they are speeding over their speed limits.
Okay, um.
Anything else? In regards to the speed limits around the island?
Maybe suggest around 70 instead?
70 for the freeway?
Yeah.
Alright, I'll uh put that down.
Because we have a law that goes, you know, if they're going over 30 or more, well if they're going, excuse me, they're going over 30 or more and you want it to be, what number did you say again?
Uh floating around, well I mean 80. 70 to 80, floating around.
So in order for them to even get that, they would have to be going over 110 and some vehicles can even reach that.
Well, I, I own a
Hard to figure out what.
Uh, yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Alright, I'll keep that in mind. Thank you for that input.
I have a quick note on this uh subject if I may speak.
Of course.
Um, so just based on hearing the questions and what you're speaking of, I do agree raising the speed limit to 70 on the freeways. However, if you do have a slower vehicle or a vehicle that's not able to meet that speed limit, you should maintain yourself in the far right lane.
Yes.
And continue with the normal flow of traffic. That would not, that should not subject you to a ticket or being pulled over just because you are not going the speed limit. You are going slower just because your vehicle is not able to do so.
Yes.
Law would only be broken once you, I mean this is up to discussion with the council and also Jay. Um, the law would technically only be broken if you are exceeding the speed limit or driving erratically or dangerously.
Yep. Is that clear to everyone? Any other questions relating to the speed limits? Going once? Going twice?
I actually have an unrelated question, uh Mr. White.
You're gonna have to keep those questions to the end of the
Alright, no problem.
Alright, thank you. Anything else from the other councilmen's? Okay.
You have one, I'll
Alright.
So, I am Councilman Fitzgerald, I appreciate you electing me in this position. Uh I will do what I can to uh to do what, do what I can for the city. I'm just here to help you. And anyway I can, uh the talking point I would like to bring to discussion today is regarding the business revenue division. Um, a lot of people are asking about their business license, how they can get one, how they can work towards one. And uh, a majority, I, I mean, I, the answer I have is I don't know yet. Um, and I just want to reassure everybody that it's something that I'm gonna work towards, uh discuss with the council and you know, get to a point where we have a formal process for submitting, for people who just submit information for their businesses, apply for their licensing, and make sure it is uh, make sure the information is out there for everybody. Um, that's basically just my talking point. Uh I can take a couple of questions, but more on this will be available in the future.
Is there a staff for uh the business and revenue department?
Um, there, based on the information that is available to me, there should be a um a committee for it, uh currently, I do not believe we have one, which is why the council is going to be looking into it further. Uh at least that's an issue I will be pushing. Uh, I think it will be, I think we need to have uh more activity with the mayor and see how we can go from there. But this is just a brief topic, I just wanted to let everyone know that I am looking into it as I have been asked several questions on it already. Anything else? Alright, that ends my talking points, thank you so much.
Thank you Connor.
Alright, is there anything else? Chief, did you wanna say a few words?
Uh, no, I guess the only thing I have to announce is uh I currently have two seats on the council as I am chief of police and I was an elected member, so I guess effective immediately I will resign from the elected position but continue uh as chief of police on council.
Alright.
Conflict myself on, on two issues and to remain as a single vote rather than two.
Okay.
Uh, nothing from me at all because I'd rather get the actual legislation.
Perfect. Alright, well, I guess uh I will go. Alright. So, if uh you're aware of our public library utility, you could have grabbed this before the meeting. Uh this act that I am proposing today is called the City Council Regulation Act 1985 Number 1. And what this essentially is, is an act that's going to bind the city council to adopt certain procedures. It's going to bind us to do a good job, it's going to bind us to listen to everybody here. It's going to give us purpose, that is legislated the law, meaning that we must abide by it. Uh it is also going to establish a framework for the people to materially get involved in the law. It's also gonna establish a framework for holding ourselves accountable. Uh you know, let's say a council member decides to not do their job, then it will establish a way of addressing that. So if anybody has a um wants to ask any questions on the legislation, I'll open the floor, any council members, any members of the public, I'll start with the council. Um, but everybody should be able to get a copy of that legislation to give it a quick read over before we uh get started with any questions. So that's essentially what it is. It's uh ratifying and codifying uh the actual city council into law, which is really just strengthening our role in the city and uh making us a legitimate institution under the constitution, as it has already been written. Alright, I'll open the floor to any questions or requests or amendments anybody wants to be made.
Yeah. Nothing from me, councillor Matthew.
I read the constitution, I think it's pretty clear.
Just giving a quick brief read over real quick.
No problem.
Alright, uh no questions from me.
Thought they were taking general questions, my bad.
Alright. No council members? Nothing, Kelly? Oh, no problem.
I have a question, Mr. Martin.
She doesn't have a voice today. Ah.
So was that you Bebs?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, section 10, uh, I guess 1A footnote I. Uh it says here that a citizen can introduce legislation uh upon achieving 30 votes. Are those basically just signatures? What's a vote? What is 30 votes?
So we've defined that in uh Schedule 1 of the act. So that should really give them a uh, a framework and requirements. So I'll be able to achieve that. So yeah. Uh 30 votes is 30 approvals by an individual member of this uh state. That's correct.
Alright, alright, uh, okay, yep.
Uh, the reason it's that number is I believe it's reasonable to one promote uh actual participation and people taking, you know, proactive measures. Um, so people may see it as too low, but I believe that it fosters a healthy environment for people to promote that stuff. Um, and I believe it's, it hasn't been arbitrarily chosen, it is a, I feel like a 30 is a good amount to run with and I think everybody would agree with me. So, uh if this is passed, just know that every meeting that we're going to be holding, you'll have the opportunity to come up here and uh show us you have those signatures and uh show us what you have, so we can uh hopefully vote on it. Or we will vote on it.
I see that here now Schedule 1 coming at the very end.
Yeah, no worries.
Clearly defines what uh constitutes a vote. Alright. Perfect, perfect.
Thanks for your question Bebs. Anybody else, any questions? Concerns?
Are we, are we taking general questions now?
Uh,
Not quite.
I'm going to have questions about this act currently.
Okay, okay, I'll hold off, I'll hold off.
If there's no questions about the act, then we can move to general questions, sure. That's alright with me.
Alright.
Uh councillor Martin, do you wanna sit back when you're seated and they can take the stand?
Sure. It's
Alright, just uh step forward to the standsa. Thank you.
G'day everybody.
Hello.
My name's Izzy Hunt, um just got a quick question, uh been hearing some chatter around town, it's starting to get a little bit scary, uh what, what, I guess my question would be to the police chief, uh what, what, is there anything being done about the, the recent Sasquatch sightings on Mount Chiliad?
Do we have any questions for someone who's not a fucking loony?
Well, that's not very kind sir.
This is not a court Billy.
Okay. Nice to know where we stand, the public safety.
I think, I think I may have seen the Sasquatch back at your ma's house in the bedroom.
Ah damn chief. Alright.
Alright. It's nice to know you're taking it seriously chief.
Yeah, I'm not taking it seriously, it's a Sasquatch.
I, I believe somebody, somebody uh from the stories.
Lee was speaking, I didn't think anyone heard her.
Sorry about that, my voice is a little messed up. I am taking the Sasquatch sightings very seriously and it will be taken care of.
There we go.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Councillwoman Kelly for you.
Thank you councillor woman Kelly. Uh yeah, they've just been getting a bit scary, I heard somebody got shot up there regarding the Sasquatch recently and uh just some stories are floating around, starting to scare the public.
I, I'll take the shooting very seriously from the police side, but I don't believe in no Sasquatch.
Okay.
He is a man of faith.
Yeah, I don't believe in magic, I believe in God.
Okay, well, I just wanna let you know. With the stories being told, I'm quite certain there's some evidence there chief. You might wanna look into it before he gets into the city.
Thank you sir, uh I would suggest if possible you should uh send a letter to just send a letter to the station uh regarding any information you have on it. Uh that is the, my suggestion outside of uh Kelly working on it as well.
Okay, thank you for being so kind.
Of course, thank you.
Hello, here Billy Banter. Um, I got a question regarding um Benny's Motor Works, which is currently the only, uh, only place in the city where you can get any work done on cars like upgrades and anything else. And what is the, what is the thing, I've, I've sent a letter to you already but I haven't received reply. Um currently, uh they're gatekeeping their services, they're preventing some people from using their services because they have personal issues with them and preventing people from actually getting their cars upgraded. If there's more than one place in the city, it wouldn't be an issue because like you'd go somewhere else, but currently if they're the only place, um what's gonna be done about this?
There's already plans in, in motion for other motor worker companies to open up, that there's already been in motion for a little while now.
But until that happens, until that happens, what is one to do?
Uh, suck it up in the meantime?
Well no, local mechanics don't perform upgrades or anything like that.
Yeah, if you want upgrades, we can't control private businesses, private businesses operate the way that they do.
Chief, um if you'd allow me to suggest this, would it be okay for an officer to supervise the upgrade? For Billy? Just to stand in there, make sure nothing gets rowdy? So that he could get his upgrades done in the meantime?
I mean again, that's a private business, and the private business has opted to exclude an individual from their services while in this case there is a monopoly on that service.
But with a good reason, only because because somebody has an opinion.
It doesn't sit well with me that someone is being barred from a service that they can only provide. It doesn't make sense to me. I think they should suck it up and allow it for now. When there are more, multiple service stations around the island, then sure, ban someone, make sure that they can never step on the property. But since they are the only one someone can go to for such upgrades, that shouldn't be the case.
Uh, so I will say this, if you would like to send me a letter regarding this issue, I will speak to um the owner's and manager of Benny specifically. Uh see if we can set up an agreement between the two businesses. Um, both of you would basically sign a document uh if they agree, like, like we said before, they are a they are privately on business, we, we can't enforce them to do anything. That's just something like we cannot do, um but we may be able to find a different resolution. Uh that's something I can work with you on and work with them on, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Uh hello there, uh councilmen and women, thank you very much for taking the time out today to uh hear our concerns and questions. Uh I have a specific question for councillor White. Um, earlier when you took the podium that uh you, you are looking forward to keeping the morale high. Would you be willing to expand further on exactly how you plan to keep morale high here as a city council member?
Well I mean currently, there are no specifics into the ways I will get the morale up. Sort of one of those things where it will develop over time, I'm gonna listen to suggestions, try and find solutions for everyone. Right now, a lot of people have come to me about the speed limits and that's the some, that's something I will be tackling first. Feel like it's one of those things that needs to be taken one step at a time. Morale is uh, it's a, it's something that everyone has to sort of work together with. The only thing I can do from my side is make sure that the island is a place where people want to be, people want to enjoy themselves, people wanna start businesses and stuff, you know? One step at a time. You know, morale is something I take very seriously. I want people to be excited again to be here. And you can trust me that I will do my utmost best to achieve that goal. I hope I answered your question. Dick?
He may be just be writing down some notes real quick.
Right.
I've got a suggestion for the uh, for the morale.
If it's Sasquatch, I'm gonna lose it.
We need to start looking at the story seriously mate. It'll get the morale back on track.
Sir, please.
How about this, I tell my Rangers to go out there with a shotgun, if they see any hairy motherfuckers wearing brown, then we'll blast them all.
I think that's a good idea.
That sounds pretty reckless. This thing isn't just gonna be seen mate.
Alright, alright, uh Mr. Sickleton, do you have any other questions?
Uh no, that was uh, uh the perfect answer, thank you very much Mr. White and thank you all uh councilmen and women.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, any questions?
Well that's, that's what I mean mate, I've only been
Uh, please stand up and come forward.
So, um, my friend can't make it here, but she wrote a statement, so I'm gonna read it on her behalf.
Read your statement sir, read your statement.
Okay. Uh, city council members and shareholders, um again, this is on behalf of Alicia Joan. Uh she's a resident of the South Side. She grew up in the South Side on Forum Drive to be exact. And her only hope for most of her life is to see the South Side flourish in positive ways. As you can tell already, this isn't always the case. With the growing numbers of, growing numbers on violence in the neighborhood with doing not just gangs, but people that are supposed to protect our community with badges as well. Uh it makes it hard to even walk, wants to walk the streets, sometimes because we constantly have to watch our back. I'm not writing to ask for a pity party from, for the South Side. What I am asking for is that if you guys care for the city like you say you do, make sure you include the South Side in that as well. During the whole time of the campaign, I can say that there was no candidates that came down to the South Side or even tried speaking with any of the South Side residents to even get our voices heard or swear our vote. This concerns me, seeing as South, as the South Side is one of the most populated places in the city. We live in a world where people see us and they're instantly judging who we are as people and don't even give us a chance to speak up for ourselves. It would be nice if our city council members wouldn't put us in a box as well. I'm not an expert, but my only word of advice is that if you want to help your city, start with reaching out to your residents and people firsthand. It will make them feel valued. Talk to them and listen, listen and hear what they have to say because without these people, you wouldn't be sitting where you are today. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns, or wish to sit down If you have any questions, comments, or concerns, or wish to sit down and discuss anything dealing with the South Side, please don't hesitate to contact me, Alicia Jones, at CW688.
Was that all?
Uh, yeah, that's basically it, from Ms. Jones.
I'm gonna start by saying that uh, we, most of the council members here have shown initiatives by putting up flyers and brochures around the city, all around the island, north, south, center of it, right, a way to communicate with them. Most of the legislations that we have come up with is for all citizens of this state. We haven't, you know, specifically targeted a certain individual or a certain group of individuals in a certain area. We are thinking about the whole state instead of individuals. I do not agree with Ms. Jones saying that we have forgotten about the South Side, no one has. And it hasn't been populated in the recent days or weeks that's passed. We are doing our best to get ourselves out there, make sure that we are available all around the island. Like I said, we've uh, put our mail everywhere, everyone's, you know, free to communicate with us. Send us a mail, suggest things, you know, talk to us, we'll be happy to sit down. And uh, yeah, we are showing initiative, but like I've said, this is something that needs to be sort of shown from both sides. We're here for you, you need to be there to reciprocate, you know?
Um, if I may, uh, take the stand for just a second. Sorry, uh, for my voice, everybody. Um, but uh, as a, as a business owner in the South Side, a lot of my campaign was about the South Side in particular. Um, I've posted my Telegram number before and I will be doing so again now that I'm back from New York. Um, anyone is welcome to set up a meeting with me at Salieri's at any time, just send me a message, okay? Any concerns you have?
Uh, I, I did campaign the South Side when I was elected to this position. I do not patrol South Side often alone because people, including specifically Alicia Jones, shoot me.
Um. Okay, I'll uh. Can you speak up, please?
I said I will agree that to multiple points here. The South Side and East Side of Los Santos as well does have its dangerous areas. Um, I myself, as I have experience that I have been shot and stabbed, um, uh, three different times in that area. Um, I still go down there and I do photo shoots for people, I discuss things, I still do business down there. And I still discuss things uh, with people. I do have a working relationship with uh, with one of the gangs, uh, in terms of photography alone. Um, and I, I will reiterate something that, that Mr. White said. If at any point, any citizen in this city feels left out and neglected, please reach out to your elected officials. We were elected in these positions to represent you and do what we need to for this city. So please, don't ever feel like you can't reach out to us. You can send me a letter, you can send William White at Martin, anybody on this, at this council right now. And we will try our best to do what we can.
Yeah, I'm gonna also add on to this question. Um. So a big point of her statement was not being able to communicate with the council, us not facilitating that communication. Um, I will say that uh, what William has raised and what Connor has raised is, is vital, it's very true. Uh, it's a two-sided engagement here. Uh, we will engage with people if they engage with us. Now, despite that, we will still go out and make ourselves available. But the easiest way that people can get in touch with us is by reaching out to us. I know that me personally, I have always had my information up on the bulletin boards, uh, always. And I don't think there is a single letter that I'll ever miss if it's addressed to me in a city council capacity. I am uh, one for letters, it is really my job, so I'll be writing letters. So if Alicia has any questions, just forward it to somebody's letters box, uh, specifically on the council, she will be your back. Or anybody of that manner, any of her friends, anybody in the South Side. Because if we don't know what the issues are, we can't address them. Obviously, what we do in this case, it's pretty, pretty self-described with the South Side, but more specifically to the scope of Alicia's concerns from her as an individual. Uh, she can express them to us and we will express our desire to help her. As much as we can. But that's, that's just, just my input there.
I'll be sure to pass that along and uh, um, also let her know, um, to review the video and uh, recording when it comes out.
Alright, thank you, thank you for your question, thank you for your time. Alright, any other questions? Any other questions? Please step up. Anyone else? Okay, yep.
I have a question for Councilwoman Kelly.
Step up.
I swear, I. I, I think the same thing, White. Yep, yep.
Well, I was just gonna ask if uh, Councilwoman Kelly and I could have a conversation afterwards.
Um, unfortunately, I do not have time, but uh, please send me a postal and I'll make some time for you. I am a, I should be feeling better on Monday.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for being so kind. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
So just to confirm, councilman Martin, with uh, Mr. Fitzgerald's act he's putting together just now, this would mean there'd be four votes at the end of this uh.
Office is seventy-eight.
Oh, good, job confirmed.
Police in action there, guys, doing their job, damn straight. Uh, sorry, can you re-say your question, Grant?
Just to confirm with Fitzgerald, with Councilman Fitzgerald's act, this would mean there'll be four votes at the end of the session.
Uh.
Uh, the three, the two acts that we got planned already, the vote on uh, that particular issue, and then obviously Fitzgerald's.
Uh, I believe so, yep, so we have. Yeah, that would be, that would make a majority, yes. Sorry, one second, just getting some stuff sorted.
Did Grant just gloss over the vote of no confidence on the mayor's?
I was just making sure we have copies for everyone here today.
I think so, babes.
I mean, I don't know why they're having a vote, they've already decided that they're gonna kick him out, ain't they? It's, I mean, it's done deal. I mean, they're trying to make it all efficient and stuff, but I mean, they decided in back rooms what they're gonna do, and then they're doing it.
In back rooms.
Mr. Banter.
Newsflash, no change in the city.
Sad part is, this is probably the first time that most people have actually seen me not in an EMS outfit.
And you look damn good.
That, that is true.
I had no idea who you were when we were walking up to the door.
I recognized the hair. Yes.
At this point, we need like a council jester just to entertain the crowd while we uh, we have our votes, things to be written up at the last minute.
I mean, if I had a voice, it would be me to be honest.
Well.
We ask more questions?
Sure, oh, we're waiting.
Alright, cause Robert brought this up, well, I was, I was waiting that stuff. Apparently, uh, the janitors have to purchase their own cleaning supplies from U-Tool.
I'm gonna interrupt you right there, I'm sorry. Uh, this was already brought up directly to me, uh, it will be on our docket for our next meeting. Um, it was brought up to me like five minutes before the meeting. Uh, I've already noted it down and it will be discussed then.
Uh, cool, cause I'm a stock manager at U-Tool and more than happy to work on transporting uh, bulk supplies of paint remover and uh, bleach wipes if necessary.
Can we talk about that each bleach wipe costs fifteen dollars?
Uh, well, listen, we can tell.
I think um, some of the matters within City Hall needs to be brought up with the mayor's office, so we will try to communicate that with the mayor's office.
There isn't a mayor's office, is there? I mean, you're about to get rid of him.
Uh, well. We'll get to that.
So the office you're about to get rid of, that's who you've got to bring it up with?
Well, not getting rid of the office, the office remains, but um.
But it remains empty, there's nobody there to do anything.
We are well aware.
Hey, chief.
Yeah?
Would you be available to speak to Gilbert and I after this?
Yeah, sure, I, I can make myself available.
Thank you.
Almost done here, sorry, everyone.
Oh, thanks, mate, appreciate it. I've never seen it, but the stories are flowing.
I got a photo of it at home, if you wanna see it.
Take the bobbling tour.
I do not believe in the Sasquatch, I just don't understand how that body vanished off the cliff.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of uncertain shit going on up there, on Mount Chiliad.
Izzy, are you a part of the Avengers Guild?
I am not, mate.
Ah, you'd love it.
Can you give me some more info on that, mate?
I'm not even part of it.
I gotcha, I gotcha.
I know it's Boblin who runs it. Costs like two hundred.
What's the name?
Boblin King.
Okay. Okay, okay, thanks, boys.
Save your money, don't go on the tour, it's a scam.
Tour is fantastic, don't listen to Billy. He's just.
A lot of controversy in this room right now.
Boblin King is Bigfoot, uh, that's all I tell you.
Well, just don't let the police chief hear ya, he'll be rude as shit to ya.
He doesn't believe in the Boblin King, it's all right. Well, because Boblin King is Bigfoot, that's why, and he doesn't believe in Bigfoot, therefore he doesn't believe in the Boblin King.
Hello, everyone, um, sorry about that. We have temporarily added the, and printed out the uh, the document in which I'll be sharing with everyone today. Uh, if you'd like to read it, just check up on the public library in these papers here. Um, the act I will be looking to introduce today is the Los Santos Fire Department Establishment Act. Uh, basically this act, um, sets forth the regulations and standards for the fire department.
Can I ask why that's not publicly accessible right now?
Um, check, like, uh, go back to the actual bulletin, it's uh, we're having some issues, so uh, it should be right there on the main bulletin.
Ah, I see.
Uh, so, currently the fire department had been, has been piloted under Pillbox Medical. Uh, and it has been needing governing legislation, uh, which will operate under. Uh, this is going to be crucial, uh, once the, once the fire chief is appointed or fully elected in. Um, and that will be in cooperation with the DOJ whenever the department is fully established, it has a proper functioning building, apparatuses, uh, safety equipment, and this is, uh, uh, this establishes all of that for them. It is a governing policy for which, um, they'll operate the different departments within and uh, how they will interact with other departments around the city. I'll give it, let everyone have a look over for it, and uh, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. And just as a general, if you don't know, the fire department is, uh, in the most general sense, they uh, are responsible, they are a department that's responsible for fighting fires around the city, fire prevention and education, as well as uh, dealing with hazardous materials, explosive materials, as well as um, difficult terrain or hazardous terrain rescue.
So Connor, just for clarification, this would be.
I'm unable to hear you, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, we're not yelling, um, this would be making the fire department its separate department, correct?
Uh, yes, once they have all of their stuff ready, it would, it would separate them as their own department. Um, with the uh, forgot, it's down at the bottom, give me one second.
It's because we obviously are gonna still work closely together as medical.
Yes.
Fire department, I just wanted to make sure, like, this is fully establishing you guys as your own separate thing.
Correct, it is fully establishing them and having them, and they have a governing policy, uh, within the constitution. Um, it, it just has the guidelines for everything, and this, this canon will be adjusted, uh, and as, you know, time goes on, as it sees fit to uh, protect the city and maintain safety standards.
Got it, thank you.
Oh, if you may, I, I might have a question for Gilbert here, uh. Gilbert, are you the new director, or who's the director of the hospital currently?
I am the new medical director.
Ah, has this legislation been seen by yourself and agreed with yourself?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
And uh, we, we are very passionate about working uh, with other departments within the city, especially in times of need, um, mass casualty events, or, you know, just in natural disasters or whatnot. Uh, we are, we, we're just here to help and provide public safety and, you know, prevention if possible. Anyone else have any questions on this matter, or are you still looking through it?
Is there a section here about the hiring process, or is that part of?
Uh, that would not. Yeah, that would, that would simply just, it, it'd just be a government entity. So, uh, of course, no felonies, um, background check, drug test, uh, just the general rule of thumb.
Alright.
That is a good point, though, I appreciate you, I'll make that down.
Uh, I have a question, Connor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, part four, section ten, uh, number two, says that uh, medical training is a part of firefighting, are they gonna be responding to emergency situations? For medical, or only during these so-called mass uh, casualty events and then natural disasters or on a fire?
Every, every fire department member has basic first aid training in the event that someone needs it, uh, we are considered first responders as well. If we do arrive on scene before EMS arrives, we are allowed to provide stabilizing care only if the individual has proper training, um. And the stabilizing care is, is only put into place until, if you go back to the very top of the act, uh, it states that emergency medical services, it further defines it as, I mean, to be exact worded. Emergency medical services is further defined as a life-saving. Emergency Medical Services is further defined as a life-saving stabilization, until a medical professional approved its medical, or a governing medical board provides treatment. So, a governing medical board would involve any emergency responders, uh, considering any EMS, uh, as well as if there is any, uh, that would include Sandy Shore's Hospital, anyone that's been recognized as a medical professional. Any further questions on that?
Um, I'm still unclear if it was answered, but.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Are they gonna be responding to uh, medical calls the same as other ones then?
Be quiet, buddy.
Sorry, I'm not yelling anymore.
Yep.
Are they gonna be responding to medical calls then?
If, if the firefighter is, is a fully fudged firefighter and has gone through all the training, they would respond for emergency response, and for stabilizing care only. And that is only if EMS is not able to respond, uh, we're, like we said earlier, we are gonna be working closely with the departments, um, we don't want to, uh, we don't want to provide and like go over the heads of EMS and Pillbox, we are only here to assist and provide uh, Emergency Medical Services if it's needed for stabilization. We are not gonna be transporting or doing any of the sort, uh, we're only there to like, let's say in the event someone is shot, they will help pack the wound and stabilize the patient until someone is able to arrive.
Uh, I do wanna point out.
Maybe I'll see them out there then.
Okay.
If there's um, no EMS on duty, we have been cleared for transport, um, but that's only if there's no EMS on duty, and we have to have basic life support training, and we have to be in our seminal.
I would say it's only specific vehicles that they are cleared to do that.
Correct.
Yep, and those will be further defined in the standard operating procedures.
Beavs, so put your mind at ease, they are not going to be the ones medically treating you, they are just simply stabilizing you to get you to the hospital, if there is no medical people around.
It'd be the same as PD transporting if there is no medical around, or lifeguards.
I want to meet our wonderful firefighters, that's, that's why I'm asking, like, I would love to see them out there, that's all.
On occasion, so you can always come hang out at the hospital, and also they're right here behind me, so.
Yeah.
You can always come meet them.
Uh, everything, like I said, this, this will be further established as the department grows. Uh, once it becomes established, it has its uh, its own department, its own building, its apparatuses, all the safety equipment they need, and they're able to, you know, start working in full capacity. Any other questions? Alright, I will be, just going to sit down. Thank you, everyone.
Boo. I'm very lary and he's out, though more people would do that.
Right, if um, Ms. Salvatore White Rosner Grant, do any of you have any, any legislation that you've drafted up, any propositions?
Not at this moment.
Not at this time, no.
Oh, no.
Okay. I, I assume that on my notes at least, uh, now we would uh, vote on the legislation if everybody's comfortable, they've read over it. Does that uh, feel appropriate for everybody, does everybody feel confident to cast a vote on these two legislative instruments?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, you know, you know.
All right, we're gonna be starting with a vote on the City Council Regulation Act nineteen eighty-five. Under the Constitution, there needs to be six members present to commence a vote, and there needs to be a majority, so in this case, four votes out of the six will mean that the legislation has then passed for judicial review, and should the judicial review establish that the legislation isn't unconstitutional, then it will be ratified. So, I guess we'll start off quickly, everybody who is uh, in favor of the City Council Regulation Act being ratified, uh, raise your hand.
I think that's uh, all available members in favor.
What is that, five to six?
I'm guessing, just to double check, everybody who.
I honestly don't know about, it's politics, isn't it, so it doesn't matter at the end.
Alright, it's a unanimous vote from the council, uh, behind the desk, and that will be forwarded to the Department of Justice for legislative review. Perfect, alright, uh, next is going to be a vote on the Los Santos Fire Department Establishment Act.
Just been standing a while, mate.
I'm guessing uh, we're gonna do the same thing. Everybody in favor of the legislation, raise your hand. It appears it is a, it is a unanimous vote, if anybody is against the legislation, raise your hand. Alright, uh, it is a unanimous vote by the council on this uh, legislation, so that'll also be forwarded to the Department of Justice for judicial review.
Boo.
Okay, perfect, thank you everybody for your participation in that vote. Okay, next, uh, there is a big point of contention, uh, this is going to be a vote of no confidence being brought against the mayor by myself, uh, and two other members of the council. Um, just let me deliberate.
Hi, mate, do you work, do you work at?
I think it's done, they were decided, I mean, it don't matter.
Alright, uh, same thing that we have done with the Los Santos Fire Department Act to say whether you're going to have a hand to see.
Hi, mate, do you work at uh, Weasel News? She's filming.
I'd just like to direct everyone's attention to the Public Library Bulletin. There is a new document that has been placed in there, so give it a read, and then we will take any questions, I guess, after.
And then, uh, as one of the people who brought this forward, I'll uh, verbally express my thoughts on it, after uh, all the other members have read through it.
I mean, I don't know if there's really much till, I mean, I don't know, you can go into it if you want to, he just hasn't showed up, that's pretty much it.
Yeah. Um.
Um, speaks for itself, in and of itself. But uh, the main crux is uh, he, he hasn't showed up, he hasn't been here for us, hasn't been here for anybody, hasn't been here for his Vice Mayor Joy, which has been a tragedy, she's been trying really hard. If you haven't met Joy Daniels, you know that she's wonderful, and it's a shame how she's been impacted by the mayor's absence, however, this is an action to rectify that, and hopefully, I mean, definitely approve the status of the mayor's office, and that's the intention of this vote, it's in the interest of the people and the functioning of our government, so we can get things moving forward, instead of a position being you know, pretty much de facto absent, but not in an official capacity.
Can I say something, um, it seems like that Mister, Mister Marino, uh, likely being knowledgeable of this information, decided entering a business relationship with a two-visual person in Los Santos Customs, saying that like, they were, they were, um, that he's um, he's obviously been mixing and being liaison with um, with felons. I mean, considering half the fucking city are all felons, then I mean, as a mayor, you're gonna have to um, liaise with felons, ain't ya, it's gonna be part of your job.
But those being liaising with felons in terms of communicating and obviously seeing their affairs as a member of state, and buying a fucking business with said felons, mixing your money in with theirs, that makes an entirely different matter. We obviously will need to talk with felons as part of our job, we just don't enter into business partnerships with them.
I would like to point out that there is a council member who also has formerly received felony charges, that has not been too hasty with our judgments here.
And it has been dropped.
Yeah, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be one hundred percent honest over here, I don't really give a fuck who he liaisons with, I care if he's doing his job and he's not. He's my friend, he's not doing his job, I don't think we need to really discuss anything besides that, to be honest with you.
Right, I've worked with uh, I've worked with Marino in the past, uh, as part of the LSPD, and he is a very hardworking person, but in regards to the mayor position, not much was seen of him. He was given some, uh, you know, mercy, at the start of the week, he had some family issues which everyone overlooked, you know, everyone gave him some time to step away, which was understandable and justified, but what about after? There was no communication, no mu, not much appearance, not many meetings, not much was going on, and the whole city was in a deadlock. It wasn't moving forward, moving back, it was just not getting anywhere.
Um, so, something.
Yeah, um.
It's the demons of the old city. I think it's demons, Bruno, they're gonna shut this place down. It's fine, hopefully, but I won't let me.
Uh, hopefully not, everyone remain calm.
Yeah, I need nothing for the demons.
I'm just coming over here to mention something I've noticed, um, and Matthew, you might be able to answer my question a little bit more. So, something we at Pillbox have noticed, and it's something that maybe the mayor put into place, is the community service is part of. Yeah, I know.
It's the communists, take cover! That's, that's, that's for Danny, and now they've got us.
No, no worries, just Russians.
Alright, just take a seat, guys. Remain calm, take a seat. Everyone just please take a seat.
Los Santos, missile prices.
I'm gonna sit by you guys.
This feels quite intrusive to the conversation.
I wonder if this has anything to do with the mayor?
No, hopefully not, but don't worry, we'll be looking into it.
Check, check the walls, they've got one of them things, like, it's like a bug, they're listening in for information on the city, everybody beware of the communists. I can sniff these bugs out. I'm telling you. There's some bugs in here, the Russians are here. Where's your, where's your passports? God.
There's one we can go now.
I don't know.
I'm not sure.
I hope it's aliens, they're more constructive than it. Oh, god, I wish, I hope it's ETs. You know, Bruno, I cried when he took one of them, I was sad. Yeah, oh, god, he's better than so many other humans, why can't we just have ETs? Yeah, but, you know, we, we live in land, instead we've got council members and Russians. Maybe, maybe, I mean, I'm not trying to judge him, I've had Russians quite hardy. It, it, it's, it's fine, you know, they're, after taking over the country, you can be a little bit dismissive of them. We really shouldn't sell this next to the weasel lady, though.
It's a shame I took our hands off this, really.
Well, you, you put yourself on, maybe give a little dance around the camera now while the Russians are trying to, you know, get assistance. I think so, yeah, I think she's, she's holding the cam, camera, yeah. You have to take your clothes off first.
That is being looked into, please take a seat, remain calm.
I'm not afraid of the radio.
The communists left.
We'll just be waiting for the chief to get back and uh, anyone else who was already here, and we will continue.
Oh, funny, oh, the chief of police disappeared, isn't the Russian comms died down?
Well, I think it's his job to make sure that there's peace in the city.
Yeah, that's what they all say, that's what they all say.
See, there we go, there he goes, you see, he's running back, look at him.
Sprinting back, taking off his Russian moustache, putting on his American one. I don't know, really, I'm just speculating, Bruno, sorry.
Yep, that's fine, sir, you have the right to speculate.
Oh, yeah, I, I, speak, can I, can I come up there for a second, why it's so calm? Just, I don't need to speak to the.
Wait for the chief to arrive back.
Oh, I don't need to speak to the chief.
Okay.
Those Vidania officers. Wing, wing.
It was just a boombox, okay, no need to fear anyone, we're all in good hands.
They're going out a copter because somebody put a radio outside. I mean, that's not a waste of taxpayers' money, is it?
I'm not sure, Bruno, I, I don't know if it's, I think someone was sticking a radio outside trying to be funny, but I mean, I wouldn't have called that hilarious, like, put a nice song so we can enjoy it, you know, while this meeting's going on, don't, don't play Russian spy still. God, that would be lovely, it'd really break up the atmosphere. Oh, I didn't even think, Bruno, sometimes I'm just an accident genius, you know? Oh, god, we're, we're cast from the same stone, Bruno.
You shouldn't say that word in the courthouse.
A bomb!
Everyone will get an update, I think um, we're gonna be moving on to a vote.
A bomb?
They said it might be a bomb, they said it might be a bomb.
There's a Russian bomb in here! I mean, come on, that's.
We'll get to see the fire department in action.
If it's Russian boobs, I think it's fine, but if it's Russian bombs, then we're fucked.
Alright, we're all fine. Let's keep it peace, sir.
The court is back in order, okay. So, everybody has had, hopefully, ample opportunity to read over the vote. Uh, this vote requires a uh, a sorry, super majority of the council members, so six out of eight, we have six in attendance, so it'll have to be unanimous. Everybody in favor of the vote or no confidence, raise your hand.
I almost stopped for a minute, the chief wasn't gonna vote.
Uh, the vote of no confidence.
I mean, all Danny Marine, if there was turn up and not vote, then it wouldn't be in the super vote, would it, it would have failed.
Uh, his votes excluded.
Thank you, Kelly, thank you for being here.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, council members, everybody, unfortunately, I need to leave, if anybody needs anything, send me a message, right?
Take uh.
Feel better, take care.
Feel better, take care.
Alright.
Okay.
Goodbye.
The result of this vote is meaning that the vice mayor, uh, Joy Daniels is going to be appointed into the mayor position. So this is going to get things moving forward and give you guys, the people and us, somebody who is actually, in being involved as in, in the mayor. So, uh, this is good change and hopefully, uh, hopefully this pans out, which it will. Um, so, the next, next on the agenda after that vote was, uh, public question time. But that already happened before, but if anybody has any more questions that have arisen, uh, feel free to come up now.
Yeah, I think we have a question at the back.
Oh, I was just a, a general, oh, pop forward, excuse me, Weasel. Oh yeah, I, I think I'm audible, can everybody hear me of the council? Hello? Well firstly, mister, I believe you're William White, correct of the White Company?
That's right, yeah.
Right, so terribly, you're, you're the man who shafted Sandy Shaw's for rolling papers, I'd just like to say that. At the end, what, why? As a man who speaks for the people, are you so prominently trying to shaft us with the prices? Oh, I'm, shaft me, shaft me. I'm, I'm, I live in a good damn trailer over in Sunny, I'm, I'm as poor as I can. Shafting out me job from Bennys and now I can't afford rolling papers because the White Company is expanding into the pooh and ear woods and, and, and I don't even know where this is. Oh yeah, I'm, I'm just, I'm quibbling your prices.
That's fine, that's okay, uh, it, it, it's not really relevant to city council matters.
Well, it is, cause you represent me technically, you representing the people, and I'm a person.
Which is why I'm willing to entertain your question.
Yeah, but why are you entertaining it? We're, we're just entertaining lower prices for the masses.
You mentioned that the store, the White Company in question was the only store around Sandy Shore's location, which is not true. There are multiple stores there.
Yeah, I used to own the other one, and I lost it because someone was coming in buying all my roller papers and selling them at market prices.
Okay, well, um, that's a private matter, if you'd like to bring it up to me specifically.
I'm, I'm talking to you, council William White, I'm talking to you right here, right now about this terrible, terrible travesty.
That's fine, my official.
Wait, hold on everybody, can, can you go to him about it, cause I don't give a shit and I don't need to hear it.
That's fine.
Wait, so we've, so that fellow could bring up Sasquatches, but.
This is my official answer to you, okay? That's a private business, you'll have to come to me privately. Do you have any other questions?
Wait, so you're representatives of the people, but we can't bring you the, the questions publicly?
This is a city council meeting.
This is a city council.
It has nothing to do with the city council directly.
It's city price.
We, we have, we have.
We can talk.
You, you can see this everyone, little man shafted by the council again.
Yep, that's right.
Just, just like Bennys.
Speak to me.
Keep passing the buck.
Boo!
Anyone else?
Yeah, would anybody have any questions for the council?
Anything about the vote, anything about the legislation, any other matters?
Can I ask her when is weed gonna be made legal?
Oh boy.
Never.
Probably never.
They're not even gonna do research on it or anything, and you know, it's a wonderful, wonderful thing that mother nature has provided for the people. No, they don't, people who smoke weed just watch TV. Put their feet up, watch TV, people who take, people who take meth kill people. People who take weed, then they're out of punch up in their life.
Now that's a crazy request, Jesus.
Alright, is there any other questions, any other questions for the council? Mr. White? Is it true you were banned from the church? Please step up to the podium, thank you.
Oh yes, it's an officer, now he's got some chops, go on soon, get him.
Let's hear it. Ah, ahem, is it true you were banned from the church on Route 68 for demon worshiping?
What?
Oh my god! That's not council matter again.
That's actually pretty cool.
Wait, it's six minutes, I don't know who, was he, were you talking to me, George?
No, 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 Mr. White.
I was gonna say, how fucking dare you?
Oh no, I would never accuse you, sir.
I take it back, William White, I'm here.
Previously mentioned in the past to the other question relating private matters. Maybe it should be taken to, oh, it should be kept outside of the city council meeting.
Sounds like you got a lot of private matters, William White.
So you're not worshiping demons? I am not worshiping demons, I'm a god.
Did William make those pentagrams?
No, I did not.
All my.
He's got the communist demons in him.
Well, if there are no other questions, I think this, uh, city hall meeting has come to an end.
Wait, 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 one last, one last serious one, the, the, not about prices, Mr. White. And I like you know that, I know there's demons inside you, right, anyway. What, what we doing about the, how do I put this? I worked at Bennys for a long time, you see, and I had a disagreement with one of the managers, he's laid me off blacklist to me and now I can't fucking go anyways. What's, what's the crack, can I open another garage and be like, fuck you?
We, we've already discussed this, uh, there are new garages coming to the city. Uh, and new businesses that are gonna be blossoming from that. And if you are unable to go to Bennys, as I said to Billy, uh, you are free to reach out to me directly to see if we can work out some kind of agreement with Bennys to get you in there, they are a private business, so we cannot interfere directly with their business and who they choose and choose not to.
No, I know, I know, I know, it, it, that's fine, as long as there's some new mechanic places coming, that'll be, leave me there and get a job again, you know, it's like being an unemployed mechanic with only one mechanic job, it's terrible.
Yeah, uh, yeah, so as the four, as four of us here are newly elected, we are trying our best to do what we can as the city, this is our first meeting. We've been into this position, uh, I think less than a week now. And we are trying to do some things for the city, if you ever need anything, like I said before, reach out to us, if you wanna bring stuff to the docket, to the meeting, things we need to discuss, reach out to us.
Alright, thank you very much gentlemen, uh, all the best.
Alright, if there are no other questions, this city hall, city council meeting has come to an end. Thank you everyone for your time, thank you for being here, thank you for getting involved. Take care of yourself and, uh, make sure and don't hesitate to contact any of us if you do need to suggest or complain to us. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Blow your braces, but thank you. I guess, I guess we're free?
Are we free to go?
Yeah, thank you, goodbye everyone, thank you Weasel, oh, that's not the right way out.
That's fucking fantastic.